This regular meeting of October 14th, 2024, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley?
Here.
Hamel?
Here.
Jacob Itzkizier?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Sancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by students from Prescott Elementary School. Do you want to say your name and grade?
I'm Amani Hudson and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Kai Hudson and I'm in preschool.
I'm Ken Hudson and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Karen Hudson and I'm in second.
I'm Greta Garza and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Landon Corpus and I'm in fourth grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good job, Prescott.
Dolphins. Love having the kids.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 16th, 2024 as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 16th, 2024 as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, I believe there are some board salutes around the table. Can we start with you, Ms. Bradley?
Absolutely. I'm delighted to be honored to give this board salute on behalf of the board. It's about the new beautiful playground at Lincoln. So, the board salute goes to everyone involved in the completion and the dedication of the brand-new Lincoln Elementary School Playground. If you have not driven by it, do. It's just lovely. And just a bit about that, the playground is a collaboration that benefited from the City of Dubuque block grant funds, which were the primary source of funding for the project, as the playground also serves as a neighborhood hub outside of school hours. And if you drive by in the non-school hours, it's a busy place, which is just wonderful. I think it's great. Community block grant funds are annual funds that the City of Dubuque receives from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to revitalize neighborhood communities. So, we call this braiding funds. Listen to the other funds that got involved in making this happen. Financial support from the school district and funds from a Wellmark grant and the Mercy One Foundation, put together with those block grant funds from the City of Dubuque, made this project possible. I attended the dedication for the new playground at Lincoln's annual family carnival a couple of, two, three weeks ago, and it was a great celebration that underscored the excitement for this particular project. So, I'd like to say thanks to Lincoln's principal, Dr. Megan Elsinger, and Candace Udaly, a member of the Lincoln Family Organization, and Maddie Haverland and Mary Bridget Corkin Deutsch from the City of Dubuque. All of them together helped spearhead this project. So, we're thrilled to have this new outstanding playground available to our students and our communities. So, thanks and bravo to each and all who made that possible. It's beautiful. Great.
Great project. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Hamel, I believe you have one?
Yes. A board salute goes to the Dubuque Arts Council for its continued support of creating wonderful opportunities for our students to experience the arts through its Artist in Residence Program. This year, Fly Dance Company brought its educational dance program for our schools with a dazzling live performance. This is just one of the many programs the Art Council has supported in our schools over the years, each focused on the power of art to spark emotion, develop skills, and foster creativity. Thank you to the Dubuque Arts Council for its longstanding partnership.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hamel.
So, I have a board salute that goes out to all involved for the homecoming organization events. This includes the Dubuque Senior High and Hempstead High School events. Special thanks to those involved in creating the new parade route. So, you may or may not be aware that, working with the City of Dubuque, we actually had to come up with an alternate parade route so that both the participants could be safe as well as those that were attending. So, the teams brainstormed possibilities and decided to move the parade to the Carver and Roosevelt Campus for Hempstead and to Chaplin Schmidt Island for the Dubuque Senior Parade. Both of these sound like they were overall a really positive experience. I attended the Hempstead one, and it was a lot of fun. It was especially fun because although it was a short parade, many of the students from Carver and Roosevelt got to come outside to witness the parade and cheer for their big siblings, their neighbors, their friends. And so, that was a fantastic experience. I especially want to thank the students that were involved in problem-solving for this. I know that initially there was some disappointment in the changing of the parade route and some problem-solving and cooperation with the city to make sure that the parade could go on, but it ended up being a really memorable experience. And so, thanks to the students specifically for working through that.
Are there any other board salutes? All right, thank you so much. That moves us to visitors and open forum.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We're now in open forum, and we're going to start with a report from Chris Nugent, the principal of Prescott Elementary School, to hear what's going well at Prescott.
Hi, thank you for having me today. I want to just highlight a couple of things that are going well at Prescott that are connected to the DCSD strategic plan. So, first I want to talk about the goal of family connections. Prescott has an event every month that builds community with families. We survey families at these events to see what they'd like to see more of, what they'd like to see less of. We have a lunch and learn for parents to come in and see what their kids are learning once a year. This is something the parents really enjoy and brought out as a highlight. We're also emphasizing the CSOW activities this year to connect with families so they can see what their kids are doing in school, because this was something that parents really asked for as feedback was wanting more information about what their kids are learning on a daily basis. So, we're encouraging newsletters and activities through CSOW. The second thing that I'd like to highlight that you saw a little bit of tonight is the goal area around student voice. And we have a student leadership team. And the children that you saw today to say the Pledge of Allegiance were the fourth and fifth graders are part of our student leadership team. And then, we had some younger brothers help fill in since we had some illness today. So, we thank them for jumping in at the last minute. They did great and they upped the cuteness factor, too. I think. We've had a student leadership team for a while, but this year, we've added a kindness crew that meets monthly to help build kindness activities in the school to help build that empathy around our second-step goals. And we also have a green team that are helping to build that pride in our building and recycling and collecting garbage and helping to educate kids on the importance of recycling. So, those are two things that are going well at Prescott that have to do with the DCSD strategic plan.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Go Dolphins. Anyone else who would like to address the board may do so at this time? We ask that you state your full name, your connection to the district, and that you limit your comments to three minutes using our handy timer.
Seeing none, I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to pull? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, trucking through this meeting. That brings us to the Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Ms. Whitman.
Okay, we had our meeting on Monday, October 7th, and I will highlight our discussions. We had a couple donations to some schools. Van Meter Electrical Supply employees proposed to donate flowers and plants to Kennedy Elementary School. And there's been a donation request to donate a maple tree to Audubon School. Purchase professional service contract. Martin Equipment purchased of a new front-end loader for the Building and Grounds Department at an estimated cost of $118,950. But we traded in an old loader, and the end cost is only $41,950. Updates to current districts, school district projects, senior high school, the renovation phase two. Tricon Construction is working on the final items, so final inspection will be November 1st for that project. Sageville Elementary solar project. The paperwork is finished and submitted to Ida Bailey, and now the district is waiting for information about the reimbursement. So, final closure of this project will be in 2025. Lincoln Elementary Outdoor Wellness Project. There was an open house on the playground equipment, was held September 26th. I believe there was a great attendance to that, and it's fabulous equipment. Everyone's enjoying that equipment during the school day, after hours, on weekends. So, we're really proud of that. Preschool and renovation project. The building is complete, and there was some change orders. And change order number five for additional $6,200 for city inspector occupancy requirements. Audubon Playground Equipment received the certificate of substantial completion for the playground equipment. Eisenhower Gym Addition Project. Reviewed addendum for the professional service agreement with origin design for additional to the project, including relocation of the main office and nurses' and principal offices, upgrading the fire alarm system, and modifications to the existing playground structure. That playground structure, we have a rotation for our playgrounds, all the elementary schools. We've decided to bump that up a year earlier. Since we're working on the school, we're going to go ahead and include in this project to finish that playground equipment with the project so we don't have to go back later, a year later. Irving Mechanical Remodel Project. Working on setting up a meeting with the DNR and the City of Dubuque to address the issues with the underground mines on the property, because there's geothermal drilling that needs to be done, so we've got to locate those mines. So, that's still in progress. The transportation siding replacement project is moving along. It should be wrapped up in a couple months. Professional Service Agreement Addendum with Origin Design. Reviewed the addendum and the master contracts to include fire escape inspections at Washington and Jefferson Middle Schools. Synergistics. Josh is currently working on Energy Star ratings. A boiler technician will be coming to fine-tune the boilers in the district for fuel efficiencies. We, as we always have monies that we need to invest, we receive quotes and do track. Community Credit Union gave us the best interest rate for our investment. Let's see. I have, now I will go to facilities support recommendations, and I have quite a few of them. So, I'll start reading those.
Sue?
I move the Board of Education approve the donation of plans for landscaping at Kennedy Elementary School from Van Meter Company and employees in the amount of $208.65.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation of plants for landscaping at Kennedy Elementary School from Van Meter Company and employees in the amount of $208.65. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the donation of a maple tree to be placed at Audubon Elementary School Playground in the amount of $250.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation of a maple tree to be placed on Audubon Elementary School Playground in the amount of $250. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve change orders one through nine to the agreement with Tricon General Construction Incorporated for the Lincoln Elementary School Playground equipment in the increased amount of $91,621.17.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change orders one through nine to the agreement with Tricon General Construction Incorporated for the Lincoln Elementary School Playground project in the increased amount of $91,621.17. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment. This is an increase of $91,000. It does keep us on budget and is part of the grant money that Ms. Bradley was discussing earlier. So, many funding sources came together to accomplish that project. And so, although this sounds like a scary unexpected expense, it's still on budget and it's part of the grant. So, this won't be seen as an overall increase. Thank you.
Right, thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Lincoln Elementary School Playground project, an authorized payment of final project costs to Tricon General Construction in the amount of $172,121.57 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Lincoln Elementary School Playground project, an authorized payment of final project costs to Tricon General Construction Incorporated in the amount of $172,121.57 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve change order number five to Sheets Design Building LLC on the preschool renovation project in the increased amount of $6,260.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number five to Sheets Design Building LLC on the preschool renovation project in the increased amount of $6,260. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve certificate substantial completion, number one, on the Audubon Elementary School Playground Replacement Project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve certificate of substantial completion, number one, on the Audubon Elementary School Playground Replacement Project. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve addendum number one to the agreement with Origin Design Company for the Eisenhower Elementary School Gymnasium Addition Project, the increased amount of $92,000. As I had mentioned earlier in the minutes, we are upgrading the fire alarm. We're renovating the, we're getting new main office and nurses' offices, but we are going to renovate the current main office and upgrading the playground equipment sooner than later. And that caused the increase.
Okay. So, I heard a second from Sarah. Thanks for that explanation, Ms. Whitman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve amendment number one to the agreement with Origin Design Company for the District Fire Escape Inspections Professional Services Agreement in the increased amount of $2,500.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve amendment number one to the agreement with Origin Design Company for the District Fire Escape Inspections Professional Services Agreement in the increased amount of $2,500. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve 2023-2024 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment on it, having read it for the meeting today. That's a work of art. And I, that, the policy, the procedures that are detailed there to keep us financially and procedurally safe and healthy and well as an organization are. It's really beautiful work. So, to Kevin Kelleher and Lisa and the team in the finance office. Thank you. It's beautiful work.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. It would have been a real bummer if we voted that one down after you just said that, right?
It's really beautiful, but we're not going to pass it.
It took more than a minute.
I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report, and I believe Lisa Demmer will be presenting that quarterly report to us now.
Wait a second before you do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Over to you.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Hawkins. Just a couple of things I want to point out on the budget report. If you look at page 90 in your packet, we're looking at the general fund expenditures. The GL budget column is not complete as all budgets have not been entered yet. We're hoping to have that completed by the end of October. I also would bring your attention to the range-to-date column, which represents the month of September's expenditures, and it does have a negative amount. The reason for this is because of the FY 23-24 audit accruals are finalized in September. These accruals are paid out in July and August, which are mostly the salary and benefits. Then, we subtract those accrual expenditures out of September's totals because they were for their last fiscal year. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, on page 90, you will see the management fund. Those expenditures show that most of the budget allocation has been spent. The reason for this is because the month of July, the district pays 100% of our property liability and workers' comp policies for the fiscal year. We also pay out early retirements for the prior year retirees. So, those expenditures represent a majority of the expenses for the year for the management fund. Then, if we go on to look at the revenue on one, page on 95, the general fund revenue were roughly 25% through the fiscal year, but the revenue only shows about 14%. There are two kinds of reasons for that. We received 10 state aid payments, slightly over $7,935,000, which we received monthly, and those payments do begin in September. We also receive the majority of our property tax revenue in October and April. So, those are some reasons why the revenue is still lower. And then, if we look at the management fund and Pebble Fund, it is also, we also do receive the majority of those tax revenues in the October and April payments. The Save Fund, you will notice that the year-to-date revenue has already exceeded the budget amount due to the sale of the revenue bonds that we just, or we just did. And then, finally, on page 98, the Nutrition Fund. The year-to-date revenue for this fund is low because the federal and state reimbursement claims for August and September meals is not received until October. So, those are just some pointers that I wanted to share with you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
All in favor of approving the quarterly budget report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I just wanted to make one more note before I finish with my report. We're always trying to save funds, and when we sell equipment that's not in use for us anymore, that is a big win for us. So, we were told that there was seven buses that were sold on Gov. Deals, and that brought in proceeds of $85,000. And those funds go into the general fund, so that helps us. So, we're very proud of the people that look for these sales and do this for us with the equipment that's no longer in use.
Give it a new life somewhere else.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Whitman. That brings us to the Educational Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Jones.
Thank you. On this, our last Wednesday, we first heard from Mark Burns, Lisa Feltes, and Julie Lang, who presented the Iowa statewide Assessment of Student Progress testing data from the 2023-2024 school year, which our students from grades three up to grade 11 take online. The data from these tests will be used to, by our educators and instructional coaches to find learning gaps and help differentiate the needs of our kids and support those gaps. Each level looks at data by each standard and each individual student, and then identifies ways to bring students up to these standards. One very important factor that we continually saw and heard was just the importance of attendance and how big of an impact that makes on the data, the testing scores. So, that's something that we're really striving hard to turn around for those kids who have chronic absenteeism. And then, let's see. After that, we heard from Mimi Holzinger, who's our Director of Behavioral Supports. She gave an overview of the new threat assessment model the district has invested in. It's called the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. Mimi did attend a training over the summer and then has successfully brought that back to our district and has trained our resource officers and 90 other district staff members, who will help us to systematically respond and react to threats to improve safety and overall problem-solving within our district. So, that was all that we covered on that one.
Yeah. Just reviewed some policies and then...
Lots of policies.
Got out of there. It was a fast one. All right, thank you, Ms. Jones. That brings us to new business.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing October as Cyber Security Awareness Month and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing October as Cyber Security Awareness Month and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas, the Dubuque Community School District recognizes that it plays a vital role Whereas the Dubuque Community School District recognizes that it plays a vital role in identifying, protecting its individuals, and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have significant impact to our individual and collective safety and privacy. And whereas cybersecurity education and awareness is crucial for everyone, including schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet with a computer, mobile phone, or other internet-connected device. And whereas monitoring and maintaining professional and personal accounts, being conscientious of what you share online, keeping your systems and software up to date, creating strong and unique passwords for each of your accounts, recognizing and reporting suspicious messages, and using mobile devices and other internet-connected devices safely are ways people and organizations can protect themselves from phishing, viruses, ransomware, other types of malware, financial loss, and the loss of sensitive data. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, and awareness of essential cyber practices will improve the security of the Dubuque Community School District's information and infrastructure. And whereas the Dubuque Community School District encourages all individuals to learn about cybersecurity and to put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses to stay, to stay safe online and connect with confidence. Now, therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Cyber Security Awareness Month, signed this 14th day of October 2024. Thank you for putting this together and for reminding us to change our passwords, right? Don't use the same one for every account.
If I could, if I could just say a thanks to Kobe Colbert. My gosh.
Kobe definitely...
Yeah.
Yeah, Kobe was devastated to be here tonight.
I'm sure. Kobe is our wonderful head of our tech everything. I'm sure he has a title that isn't that.
We'll call him head of tech everything from now on.
Yeah. But that, he and that team, I mean, we are so fortunate to have their wise and good work in, in all manners tech, but on this cybersecurity thing, I know Kobe has really worked hard to see that we're secure.
Yeah. And it can have a big impact if folks aren't doing it in terms of the effect on institutions and organizations. We've seen that around the state, so don't click on things that look suspicious, everybody. I'm not sending you a message request in a weird way, I promise. Okay.
I move that the Board of Education expel student number 1405165710 from attending the Dubuque Community School District.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education expel student 1405165710 from attending the Dubuque Community School District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Superintendent Hawkins, I'm just wondering if the community might like to know that we have a procedure for that student to be able to regain student onsite learning?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you know, our number one goal is always for students to graduate from our, from our high schools. And so when a situation arises, we do lots of different interventions. We meet with family members, we meet with that student, and then there's different options that we go through depending on the situation. And so the goal always is, after a suspension or someone is expelled for a short period of time, we work hard to get them back into our school district so they can catch up on those credits that they've missed and then get to graduation at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other board member administrative issue to discuss that was not on the agenda?
I would just like to talk about two different things. One, just to expand a little bit off of Katie Jones' comment about chronic absenteeism. You know, our district has done a lot of work as far as absenteeism for the last multiple years. This year, it's not anything new. We're just being maybe a little bit more friendlier or aggressive with the encouragement of having students in our classrooms. I know there's a new law, a new state law, that states many different factors when you get to different percentage points, but I just want the community to really know it's about us trying to break the barriers or help support you in breaking down the barriers so that we can get your child in school. We know that students are most successful when they're in our seats, attending class, being engaged, and having a good time with their classmates. So we really encourage families to make sure that students get to school every day, and if not, please, call the offices, let's, you know, have a conversation, and let's see if we can't come up with a plan to help support you to get your student to school every day because that's really our, our main goal in all of this, no matter what the new law states. And then the second thing I'd just like to say is I just want to say a thank you. We had an open house at Senior High School this last weekend over homecoming, and I know that there's been lots of time and energy from Rob and his crew and the construction teams over the last, how many years is it, Rob? Ten? I don't know. Maybe too many. But we had a great turnout at the open house that occurred from 10 to noon on Homecoming Day. And so both principals have decided that they're going to have open houses each year on Homecoming to open it up for the community to come in and view the changes and just to go back and, and see their old school. So I'm excited about that, but I was really pleased with the turnout that we had to show off all the improvements that we've made at Senior High School. So thanks for everyone who did that.
Thank you.
Yeah. So been able to get into a few of the school buildings, and I must say, the vibe this year or the energy is just, it's, it's different and in a positive way. Seems like teachers and students are more cheerful and happier, and maybe it is because of the human connection. So that's super cool. So thank you for whatever you're doing inside of our buildings. It's, it's really cool. And then the second thing that I wanted to share was last, like, last week, we were able to bring a variety of students through the Black Men's Coalition to a college visit to support our district's efforts to expose students to college. So thank you to University of Dubuque for partnering with us and making that a reality. But the big thing with the energy at our schools, I must say, is, is very different. It's beautiful. I hope a lot of us can get inside of these buildings. And thank you to our partners at the TH, a great article about not only getting kids to school, but getting them engage in extracurricular activities. So as much as possible, we want to get our students very active on campus. And with this new vibe, I think we're going to reach some of those goals. So thank you and the team for just the cool vibe that I'm sensing.
That's awesome.
Just on a personal note, it's been a tough time for my family with the loss of my mom, so I just wanted to really thank the board and district and superintendent for all of the support during that time. It's meant a lot to us, so thank you. Anything else?
Just to wish our superintendent a happy birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yay. Awesome.
Were we saying on camera?
That's not a gift that she would like. We'll give her the gift of adjourning at 6:07. How about that? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.